It's five o'clock. Welcome to the Board of Directors Meeting of the Lindmar Community School District. It's October seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. This is our normal meeting. I'd like to welcome the Cabinet, like to welcome all the audience here. Happy to have you here. And we have a little business to take care of, so call to order a determination of quorum, please, John.
Director Foss?
Here.
Director Lael Lancaster?
Here.
Director Maury?
Here.
Director Thomas?
Here.
Director Walker?
Here.
President Buckholz?
Here. Motion carries, number two hundred, adoption of the agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Laura, second by Melissa. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. To get started, we need to read a proclamation for National Principals Day. I invited a few of them over. Didn't get any takers. So basically, it's, it's, sorry about that. We want to thank all of the principals for what they do for us. We're very, very, very fortunate that we have as many principals that we have. We have good principals, we have a good staff. And we just want to recognize them for the month of October. Whereas principals have a significant and direct impact on the success of the students and staff. Whereas principals fulfill many administrative responsibilities behind the scenes that often go unnoticed. Whereas principals are guiding leaders for students, staff, families, and the whole community. Therefore, we, the Lindmar Community School District Board of Directors, join with a national recognition campaign and proclaim the month of October as National Principals Month. We, we urge everyone to take time during the month of October to say thank you to our dedicated and hardworking principals for all they do to ensure success in reaching the district's goals to inspire learning, unlock potential, and empower achievement. Thank you. Okay. So now we're going to audience communication, and we have a few people that have signed up. And once again, as we go into this, we want to make sure at this time that when you sign to speak, you come up and state your name and who you, who you are, I guess, as a patron student, whatever. The board will receive and acknowledge comments, but will not engage in a dialogue with the speaker because of the set agenda of the meeting. And please do us a favor and keep your remarks to three minutes. Thank you. First one on the list is Jesse Zur. He's a Lindmar Fine Arts student.
Good afternoon, folks. My name is Jesse. I'm a Lindmar senior. And I've come to talk about a couple of things regarding the fine art spaces that we have at Lindmar. First off, I want to preface this by saying that the new performance center is coming up fantastically. It looks so great, and I'm super excited for the people who get to use that. But I do, while looking at that, I've come to think about some of the other presiding issues that are within the areas that we use for our performing arts. Mainly, the, the Little Theater that we have at Lindmar High School. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe from who I've talked to and what I've been told, it was constructed in the nineteen-sixties. And what's that?
The first performance in there was in nineteen seventy-nine.
Nineteen seventy-nine, very well, thank you. So nineteen seventy-nine was the first performance. And so, within that time period, it's been about forty years-ish, forty-five years, if my math is correct. And there's a lot of, there's been a lot of equipment passed through there, lots of various performances, lots of performances throughout the years. And some of the things that I've noticed that are problematic are three main areas, which have been mainly problematic to some of the things that have been going on in there, the performances. First off, the lighting system. As Laura told me earlier, there was, there was a problem with the lighting system, as seen in the, in the show this past Saturday, or sorry, past Friday. And it comes down to just older systems, that's all it really is. And a new update, an update of those systems would help a lot with the, the performances that happen in there. And more than just the performances through the theater department, but also the various other clubs that go in there and use the space. There's lots of conference meetings, informational meetings, movies occasionally as well. There's fundraising movies, I think Key Club did that a couple of years ago as well. And then also the curtains. The curtains are ripping and old, torn, used. Normal use, to be completely honest, but with them being how old they are, they are getting ripped. And thirdly, the projection screen. Last year, in the month of May, I believe, there were some students that were working in there, and something happened. Projection screen fell down, and it was broken. And Ms. Smith is, Ms. Marcia Smith, the person whose classroom it is, has asked a few times for a new projection screen. Money's hard to come across, hasn't been able to happen. But it does affect her classroom spirit, her classroom space, and also the various meetings that do happen in there. So it's something that is kind of a priority for, for helping the school run those, those events that happen in that, in that little theater space. So essentially, after all of that, I'm just asking for your guys' support and help to get some of these apparent problems fixed, especially the projection screen. For Marcia Smith and for me, that's one of the biggest priorities, because it is her classroom space. It's a very important part of her classroom space. She does teach a majority of the speech classes at Lindmar High School. And in speech, a very, one of the standards in there is having a visual aid, which is projected onto the screen behind the speaker. So having that projection screen, that isn't just a smaller one grabbed from the library, that doesn't do as adequate of a job for that space, would be very helpful to her students, not only, but also her in doing her grading. So yes, all I'm asking is-
I hate to interrupt you, but your three minutes is up.
Perfect, I'm about done.
Thank you.
So all I ask is for your help and just to move forward in, in looking at those things in your decision-making. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Iris Strong, and I am here on behalf of Mayor Mark, which is what we call ourselves, Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. But I'm coming as not only part of mayor, but also as a district resident here, who has also worked in the district and a child that graduated from Lindmar District. And I'm also a member of the LGBTQ plus community. And someone so deeply involved in the safety and inclusion of all students and staff, I'm here to speak not just for myself, but for those who have voices, who are, whose voices often go unheard. And you can hear him whining, because you can probably hear the anxiousness in my chest, so that's what all that spells, so I'm sorry. First, I want to express my appreciation for the acknowledgement and communication for the Lindmar School District following the homecoming parade incident and the follow-up from the police report. Messages of support and commitment to investigating this act of discrimination are important first steps in standing in our community values of inclusion and respect. It means a lot to see a united front of support, particularly when our LGBTQ plus students and families are targeted in person and on social media by those near and far from our community. However, I believe this moment also calls for more, more transparency, more education, and more action to strengthen the safety and inclusion of every student, staff, and family in our district. We have experienced being targeted for who we are and who we love from local, state, and national groups that feed on disunity and spread fear and disinformation. A social media post is meaningful, but it needs to be backed up by continuous, visible efforts that reach beyond the internet. It is important to stand against the continuous attacks through legislation, through book bans, and through social media attacks aimed at minimizing or dismissing our students, staff, and parents' experiences. Oftentimes, we are not seen, heard, or represented in our classroom curriculum, materials, or staffing. And that is also critical to take vital action. I hope we can promote educational initiatives across the district, especially during this month, which marks LGBTQ plus History Month. Teaching our students about LGBTQ plus rights as a part of the broader civil rights movement is crucial to fostering understanding, empathy, and allyship. Sadly, I know too well that there are students and families who don't feel welcome or seen in our schools. Some have even left Marion because they don't feel supported or accepted for who they are. These families leave behind painful stories of exclusion, which serve as a reminder of how much work remains to ensure that our schools are safe spaces for everyone. Hate and discrimination have no place here. But without vigilance and proactive measures, these incidents will continue to happen. I urge the school board to continue to create an environment where all our children, our youth, our kids, our, and staff can feel safe where they can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Okay, that's all of the communicator, all of the audience we have. So now we're going down to five hundred, the mission moment. Any, share any thoughts or any ideas that you have?
I have one. Jesse stole my thunder. My mission moment was going to be talking about Friday night when I went to the play. Murder at the- Prisma- Pris-
Crimson.
Crimson? Mansion, hotel?
Crimson House Murders.
Crimson House Murders. I'm so sorry. I was gonna bring the thing. I, I was in theater when I was in school. And there's so many very scene events and happenings. And I wanted to go to something that had a smaller group, and, and as fitting, the Little Theater is definitely smaller. And I just wanted to give kudos to the, the actors and the crew and the teacher and director. Because, yeah, like, I thought it was part of the play, but like, she had to come out and stop the show to be like, hey, we have a lighting problem, we're gonna- And they closed the curtains, and, and they had to go back and try to fix it. And then they, when they did do whatever they were doing, they picked right back up, like, nothing had happened. And so, just, it's not ideal for, you know, a twenty-twenty-four theater production. But man, like, the resiliency and being able to, like, improvise, adapt, overcome. It was, it was a great show, it was a lot of fun, and to see them adapt to that, like, they were great, so. So yeah, it wa- it was just funny timing, but, so anyhow.
I was just gonna congratulate Dylan Wazinski, and if I've mispronounced her name, I apologize, but he was named the KCRG Athlete of the Week.
That's cool, cool. I'd like to make one, this is a little bit different, a little bit off the wall, but I was at a cross-country meet in Waverly at Wharton College on Saturday, and watching the performance, the girls did well. But we were standing, taking pictures, and a gentleman beside my daughter-in-law, my daughter-in-law Melissa said to him, sir, why don't you slide in here? You can see your daughter come in. And he said, well, there are nice people at Lindmar. And she says, what do you mean by that? And he was from Solon. He said, well, you stole Nathan Weir from us. So we're blessed. I just thought that was kind of an interesting statement, so. So thank you for coming. Alrighty, anybody else?
Yeah, I had one, and so I said the homecoming football game. What an amazing game on the field, right? But I had two things off the field that I really noticed. First was that we've got a lot of student supervisors who do amazing work just to kind of keep the crowd control. It is a packed house, and I think the Marion Police Department and the area paramedic units were responding and just being there all the time, so it's a huge partnership we've got. But while I was standing by the front, the gate, like, towards, towards halftime, two middle school kids came up to me, and, and I, I mean, I was wearing my board name tag, so I guess I looked kind of official, but there were other, much more official people there, but they just came up to me, because I was standing by the Roar store, and they said, hey, sir, we found this cellphone that was just sitting down, and we wanted to turn it in, so the right person gets it. And I just thought to myself, you know, it's about character, and we've got great folks, so that's it.
Okay, good, good comments, thank you. Well, Nathan, now you need to step up and tell us what you're worth. Six oh one, assessment data and conditions for learning. Sorry about that. Didn't mean to say, oh, you're bringing Melissa up, so that'll help. We gotta knock you down just a little bit.
All right. Well, thanks for the opportunity to talk about data, and I know that you're probably like, oh my gosh, Melissa, I overwhelmed you with a packet of some information here, but what we're gonna try to do tonight is start on page one, and we're gonna go through all two hundred and fifteen pages. No, we're not gonna do that.
Well, some of us have that, it's so-
Yeah. No, it, it's a lot, and obviously, what we do with data, there's a lot of stuff that, that happens with kids. And so, before we jump into it, there's just some thank yous. Renee helped us a ton with this. Gaila helped organize everything. You know, there's a lot of things that our two departments look at on a consistent basis, and we felt like this needed a refresh, a little bit more of a professional package for the community to be able to see as well. So I know that you all have the actual book. We only have a few copies of those just because of the cost of printing. But we do have the full PDF on there. I know that some of you had troubles with the download as well, but just remember, if you read, sometimes if you re-download it, it should pull up. There's a lot of data in there, so. So really, our hope tonight is to just walk through some key learnings. We'll kind of talk to you about how the data is organized in each of our areas, so that you can see that as you continue to work through the data packet. And then we just want to highlight some things from really six different areas that we're looking at. So Melissa's gonna kick us off by talking about FAST.
Good evening, everyone. So Nathan said we have six different categories of data that we included in the data packet for all of you. We're just gonna kind of go back and forth. What we did, knowing there is a lot of data, and some of the data sets have more pages, but starting on page two in there or on your PDF, we wanted to pull out three to five of the big highlights that we came across as we have worked with the data with us, as well as the principal groups, and as they've looked at building, reviewing last year's building plans and building their new ones. So when we think of FAST, which is the, lots of excitement out there, test that we provide, screener that we do, fall, winter, and spring, in literacy and math. One of the things that we wanted to point out is that we do have students that are meeting and exceeding benchmarks, who, exceeding a bench- sorry, it's been a long day. Meeting exceeding benchmarks grew from fall to spring. So they're coming in, and they're continuing to grow throughout the year. Every one of our K six buildings increased the percentage of students that were at that meeting and exceeding benchmark from fall to spring. So not only were they there when they came in, but we just, we kept them moving there. Every one of our buildings also increased the amount of students needing benchmark in the spring. And then we did take a look back, because there is always that question of, are we still looking at some of the impacts of the pandemic? We looked at the historical data for this in reading and in math, and it shows that we have seen growth since the pandemic. There was some of that pandemic fall, but we're starting to see some of it.
Okay, the next section, and that would be on page, starting on page seven, talks about the ISAS, which is the Iowa Statewide Assessment of Student Progress. So this is really interesting, and there's a lot of data in here, and so we didn't really want to overwhelm you with this. But, you know, for five years that I've at least been presenting student achievement data to the board, you know, we've always talked about, well, we had the first year, and then we had COVID, and then we had the year or two after COVID. Like, we haven't really seen the same test data since the state switched the test over the last several years to really give us a longitudinal look of where we're at. And so I want to just explain what's in your packages briefly, so that you can understand what you're looking at. The first, and then I'll get into the highlights. So the, the first pages, really eight through page sixteen, those are just single-year comparisons of our two thousand and twenty-four results as compared to the state and the AEA. So one of the things that we always try to look at is, how are we doing compared to our other peers across the state, and especially in our region? And it's just easier to graph those out and provide a visual of that. So you can see for each of those, and it just starts with math in grade three and goes all the way through grade eleven, including the science scores for fifth, eighth, and tenth grade. The district scores are on the left, and the AEA tabulation is in the middle, and then the state averages are on the right. So, you know, we continue to see performance higher than the Grant Wood Area Education Agency levels on really all of our tests, which I think speaks to the principals that we recognize, the staff that we have, the curriculum work that we've done. Now, we could still be better and improve in those areas, but we're certainly doing better than our peers around this area. And so, we don't always have a chance to brag about that stuff. I think that's important for us to highlight. What you'll see, oh, did you want to add something?
I would also add, in addition to all those people in our school district that are working, it is also our families and parents and our students who are working very hard to make those results happen as well. We can set the stage, but ultimately, they also are a huge part of-
Yeah, thanks. If you look, starting on page eighteen then, and for several pages following that, that just breaks down the data more by grade level, by subgroup population. And so, rather than us trying to pull out each one of those areas, we just provided a whole grade level summary. So you can see third grade starts on page eighteen and goes to the top of page nineteen. I do want to notice, or want you to notice in the data, when you see that little asterisk or the star there, that just means that there were less than ten, ten students, or the N size was ten or less, and so the state redacted that data. We also did some of that on the FAST data. Some of our data can include numbers small enough to where you'd be able to identify students, and we don't want that to happen. So again, same, this matches the visuals that you saw before that. Lindmar compared to the state and to the AEA as it goes through with that. If you flip forward then to page fifty-three, on page fifty-three, you're gonna start to see the five-year historical Iowa assessment data. And so this kind of goes along with our third point that's up on the slides, is that most grade levels that we see have really bounced back to pre-pandemic levels. So twelve of our twenty-one grades and test subjects were higher than pre, the pre-pandemic rates. Nine of the twenty-one were at or within the same five percent of less. So even though we maybe didn't quite get there, we're getting close to those. And again, that's something that you've asked about, that we've been wanting to share, is how are we doing since, since the pandemic? And thankfully, board members that were on at that time after the pandemic, you knew that that was gonna take several years for us to bounce back. So I do want to highlight something in there. Our grades six, seven, eight, and nine are ELA, which would be the English Language Arts Test, which includes a subtest of reading and written language. We really saw the highest rate of proficiency in the last five years that we've seen at those middle grades. And you can see the percentage of kids proficient up there. I'm just really pleased to see that, and, and I want to brag on that a little bit, because, you know, we have always talked as a district and us at cabinet level, is that, you know, we should start seeing results. We've got good materials, we've got great teachers. We have that support from parents and students at home. And so, we're really pleased to, to see that level. There've been some things that we've adjusted curriculum-wise. We changed some courses at the middle school. The high schools even started picking up on that with some of the work that English Language Arts are doing. And so those were really good scores to see in there. So then after you get through those graphs, you're gonna see two more pages of documents. Again, the next pages are a lot of the grade levels broken down by subgroups again. You'll see a lot of numbers redacted, and then again, for small N size. And at the end of the Iowa Assessment section are the colored graphs that you've probably seen before. And this is what's hard to tell. We've shared this with you before. This is just a snapshot that Iowa Testing provides us within the Iowa Assessment System. But it doesn't really give as much information as you have on the previous pages. We just wanted you to see that, because you've, you've seen that format before. you've seen that format before. And that's the same stuff. That's twenty twenty-four Iowa Assessment Results.
Page ninety-two.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Yes, starting on page ninety-two. Oh, wait, I did forget one thing. Sorry. I was ready to move on and then I saw a little more. You know, I put this together, so I should know, Melissa and I, we should know where all these pages are. So I want you to look at page one oh one in your in your booklet. This is not as fancy as the other graphs because there's some of the reporting tools that we use won't do this, but this is our cohort data. And so this is another place where you can look as board members. And I know the chart's kind of confusing, but it shows by color how kids have progressed through the system, same kids over the course of the years. So if you look at that in the top one is English Language Arts, for example, when they were third grade in twenty eighteen and nineteen, if you follow that yellow bar kind of diagonally down, you can see that they started out as third graders in twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen at seventy-six percent proficient. And this last year as eighth graders, they were eighty-six percent proficient. So it's just another way for us to track. You know, a lot of times we look year to year and of course, that's in our strategic plan to look at cohort data. This shows that and we've got an empty column there again as we roll over into next year to keep adding to that so that we can see cohorts over time. Yes, ma'am.
This is my favorite page. Because we're looking at the same students and seeing like it's hard to judge was this year's first graders just a little more ahead of last year's first graders and then we're comparing. I love this page. I I just want to ask about last year's fifth graders. Because as we follow their line, they're they're the one grade that's consistently declining. So what are we, what are we doing with that group of kids? Not what are we doing that's resulting in this? What are we doing to help them?
Yeah, yeah, there's I think some interesting things there. You know, one, they're going to continue to, and we work with all of our buildings to align their school improvement plans. And so hopefully that's some data pieces as they see moving forward. Fifth grade, it's also interesting. I'm not saying this is a reason why or why not, but they're also like Katie had mentioned in an email earlier today, they're our biggest group of students that are now in sixth grade this year. So that may be something we just need to pay attention to as we go to make sure that they're accessing intervention supports, even with a larger group of kids to make sure that we have them getting that.
Would love to learn more about how addressing that's like one class. I know they're the biggest class, but it seems that maybe we need to, I don't know, do something here.
Good.
As a parent of a student in another district that was the biggest class and heard that for many years, I totally get it, Brett. And I think that's information that we can get from our buildings to determine what the rates of intervention are and how many kids are getting those and what does that look like?
You just don't ever want to feel like I know, Nathan, that you're not saying the reason is because they're the biggest class and I don't believe that is. But I wouldn't want anyone to feel like they slipped through the cracks because they were the biggest class. They're still
We need them.
We need them to do well. So.
That's that's also Linmars. We've been the biggest class before and then there was the next biggest class that's come through and then, oh, this is the next biggest class. So we have there's some strategies I'm sure that we're going to acknowledge or look into. But I think that that was a key thing that I looked at as well. That is their known thing. Oh, they're the biggest class. So then what did that? It's not like they just showed up as the biggest class. They haven't just become the biggest class. And so what what are we doing for that? So that was a, that was a same concern I had today. Because you can see their numbers are different than everybody else's. Not dramatic, by the way. It's not all of a sudden that they they are tanking by any means, but they're just not at the same level of recovery as the other classes are. So thank you for acknowledging that and saying their strategies. We just need to dig deeper into those. Thanks.
And just for context for those, like, it's not just a couple of students more. We're talking about a hundred more kids in that class than any other class that we have in the district. So like context, I think is always key when we're talking about data and numbers. A hundred extra kids in one grade level is significant.
They're all, they're also, I believe, our class that was impacted when, were they kindergartners when schools shut down? If I look at that right?
They were second grade. Our current sixth graders were second graders the year that we were. Well, we shut down at the end of their first grade year and then the first year back would have been second grade. And so a significant number of them would have virtual.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Good. Thanks for noticing that.
The next section that starts on page one oh two, and I think one of the other things that we forgot and hopefully it was helpful, we tried to put a summary of what the measure was that we were going to talk about. So for condition of learning, we just tried to give you just that background summary of what it is as well as the key points. Conditions for learning survey, it is embedded incredibly all over our learner experience goal within strategic planning. And so we tried to look at the information in here regarding, and just to clarify too, it is we assessed grades three through five as one group and then six through twelve. So we do have a couple of buildings that go both ways. So that creates some difficulty sometimes when we're looking at the data. But when we look at three, grades three through five, they grew in four of the five areas and exceeded exceeded the state and Grant Wood area performance in all five of them. When we look at our six to twelve, they grew in the of the five areas and are at least and or exceeding the state or Grant Wood average in all five. We did see some scores decrease in physical safety by two and our district remains. While we're still above that, we're still not excited about that. So we're trying to kind of figure out what goes into that and our building teams are looking at that very targeted as they think about their plans. And then every one of our buildings, their building C sit plan is aligned to the conditions for learning survey. The one thing that we do need to think about as a cabinet and as our departments, as well as a strategic plan, the conditions for learning survey is now becoming an optional test in the spring and it'll be a parent opt-in for the next couple of years and they're going to track the usage of it and then make decisions about whether they'll continue to fund it as a state assessment or not. We've spent a lot of time looking at the conditions for learning surveys and how students score it and what does that look like? And there's a lot of factors that can make the scores different than you would expect them. Some of our teams have been very shocked when they've looked at their scores. But we've looked at what are those specific questions? What are kids answering? What are we going to do as buildings to address those things within there? So there is a summary of each one of those across there. It's something we're going to have to continue to watch and it is right now, the measure that we have for many of those strategic plan goals, but we're going to have to figure out what are other options for that. If it becomes opt-in, that's going to greatly impact our scores as opposed to having every student take that text.
When we took one of our tours, I appreciate one of the principals was leaning right into this and then also has able then to lead into the questions and then lean into what is a response to that and where the growth could take place and where the challenges were, but also where the nuances of that were important. And I thought that it was immediate. I mean, starting the fall this way, we're going to start the fall with this information, not wait a couple of months till we get settled and then dig in. So it'll be sad to see if this would be removed because they were able to make immediate staff and and team, what do we see in this team? And so I appreciate it. I didn't realize it could be even broken down by building, by question, by response, so forth and so on.
And by subgroups and some of our buildings have gone even down into that subgroup level and said, this subgroup is not doing well on this one. What are we going to do to be more intentional in our actions with these students? So I think that's amazing that our teams have dug that far into the data and owned it and moved forward.
Thank you. How are they able to do that? I know that earlier, a lot of that subgroup information was redacted. Can you talk about how what information they can get from redacted data and what information they don't have access to because it was redacted?
Yeah. Yeah, it's really redacted at the point of publishing. We're able to see with kids and subgroups that information, even if it's fewer than ten. So when we get when we get building reports, whether it be for Iowa assessments for most subgroup populations, there's a few that Iowa Testing doesn't track until the state finally publishes their data. But for the purpose of this, it will actually show us the number of kids in the building report.
Okay, wonderful.
It only becomes redacted when we
That's what I was concerned about, making sure that you had some way to get that information.
Good question.
This is really important information and I'm glad that we collected and it I recognize that it's now become voluntary and it it's interesting because we get parents who ask us, how come you don't know this? And and we say, well, we have a survey out there. Did you take it? And and they'll say, no, I didn't want to take that survey. Well, how how are we supposed to know it if you're not going to help us with it? So my my thought is just as we prepare again for next year or for this year, I guess. You know, I'd love to see us continue to do this as well as message out to our to our population if there are anything that we've done and so they can understand the benefit that we see from it. Other than, you know, because you guys do such a great job, day in and day out, leveraging this. But sometimes if it doesn't get said, it goes unnoticed. And so any way that we can connect back for our parents and for our students, how stuff like this has helped, I think would help us continue to enforce and reinforce how important it is.
I would agree with that, especially, I mean, when we get the survey as parents, I mean, it has a terrible name. Conditions for learning means something to you guys. It means nothing to someone who doesn't understand what this means, how it's used, like so translating the state level, you know, jargon into this is how this information impacts our schools. This is what we do with it. These are things that have changed. I'm putting it in terms that all of us can understand. Because, yeah, it'll make, I think it'll make a difference to a parent, whether they want to opt their kid into a survey or not, if they understand this is what it does. But yeah, the conditions for learning, I could interpret that a hundred different ways based on my mood and what I was thinking about in terms of learning. So yeah, I agree with Justin.
Same with kids. That's how they answer these questions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, to add to that, I think it's a, I think really the word that comes to mind as you were describing that is storytelling. And how we can pull out some of these to do some of that storytelling with our community and the several ways that we have access to communication channels. And I also agree with Justin's sentiments. And another thing I was that's really kind of heavy on my mind as I'm looking at the emotional safety and physical safety with this. We had a public comment that really hit hard on an emotional safety issue. And when I think of the physical safety piece, you know, I'm concerned at let me pause and gather my thoughts. Lots of times when we think about the data and what's happening when the survey is conducted, I think most of us assume it's a survey about activities that happen within the classroom. And I love everything about how we're using this. The fact that we have this, I was actually in the audience last year when last year's presentation and I am thrilled with this thing. It it doesn't go unnoticed. It's greatly appreciated. But that we not only consider how we can use this in the classroom, but how can we address some of these outside of the classroom? At football games, it's great that sometime like we have kids who will turn in a cellphone. But I'm afraid on the other side of the field, there might be some other kids with less favorable intentions, right? The homecoming parade, not in the classroom. And I know it's elusive and it's hard and we have awesome staff to monitor these things. I just want to make sure it is actively part of this conversation as well. Because that those activities are just as much a part of these kids' school experience as their classroom time. So thank you for letting me explain that, share that.
The one thing that I do want to think about too is just Nathan, our teams are also looking at what are what are some of those other opportunities that we have to collect data that could give us maybe other conditions for learning if the survey is not one? What are some of these other sources of data that maybe we already have that we're just not putting together yet to create some of that story of where we're at with things so we can continue to look at that as well?
Okay, next up, starting on page one twenty, we start to get into our AP, which would be advanced placement courses and ACT, which is the college readiness test. So again, the the cover page provides you with some some data there and this section isn't nearly as long, but there are some tables and charts in there for you to see our scores from last year. So, you know, and and first it starts with ACT scores. ACT is just really a measure for us at the high school to be able to tell if we're preparing our kids for college and careers, especially the post-secondary universities, that type of thing. What's been tough is we continue to see the number of kids that are taking the ACT go down. Not as many colleges and universities are requiring that. Kids aren't taking it. I had that battle in my own house with my son. He said, Dad, I don't need to take this, but I'd really like to see what your score is, but I couldn't twist his arm. So yeah, I know. And that was, he wasn't interested in that either. So he can remember that when he's paying that back later, but but we did include some snapshots there for you to see. And so really we're we're right within our five-year average of staying pretty close to that at twenty-three point seven. And again, that's higher than the statewide and the national average. But again, we had then the other measure that we look at is for AP courses. So these would be advanced placement courses at the high school. And one way we measure that is one to look at the number of kids, which aligns with our strategic plan. So we have tried to identify more opportunities for kids to be involved in those class of those classes. And you can see that we almost had seven hundred kids last year, which is a record high. So that was good to see. I think the other piece of data that comes out of that is then the percentage of Linmar kids that are earning a three or higher on any of those classes or tests. And so for AP, the College Board has a national test testing date that they do in May. And our students take an exam in those classes. Most students take exams. But you can see we're we're way higher than the statewide percentage. And so that really reflects well on the students that are in those courses, our teachers that are teaching those courses. And then you can see some of the historical AP scores on page one twenty-four. And so that kind of gives you over the course of the last several years, five years, how many kids have taken it, number of exams we've given, the number at three or higher, and then that percentage in there. So we wanted to make sure that we included some measures from AP and ACT. Yes, ma'am.
It's not in here. I'm curious about concurrent enrollment. Like, how many college classes are our kids taking and how are they doing? Like, how many credits are they earning before they graduate?
Yeah, good.
I know you don't have it on.
No, and that's probably something we could add for next year too. I mean, I think you guys are mentioning like storytelling and like sharing our story. And that's one of the reasons we really wanted to pull this information together so that we would have this, we'd have a document with that. That's good. Kirkwood provides us with kind of a regional look at that through any of our concurrent stuff that we offer onsite or at Kirkwood. And they give us a nice report usually in like November, so I could certainly look at that, including that.
I think it would, it gives you a different perspective on college readiness because a lot of college credit in high school, some of that are the career academies or the CTE programs that they're earning college credit that then go right into the workforce. It's different than students who take AP. Some students will take both, but generally there's there's a track of kids that take AP and are going one direction. And there's a track of kids that take advantage of CTE and career academies and then they're looking at a different pathway, but it's still college credit. It's still earned in high school. It's still college prep. So I would love to be able to see that data as well. I think it would give us a a bigger, a more whole picture of preparedness that some of our kids are getting through our programs, whether they're taking them in the high school or they're traveling over to the Kirkwood Building in Hiawatha.
Yeah, yeah, good. Because we have a lot of kids doing those courses as well.
Yeah, if that report comes out in November, whenever it comes together, I would also love to see takeaways from that Kirkwood.
Yeah, we can, when I get it, I can have Amy put that in your board memo so that you can see that, see that data.
And second to last one, which starts on page one twenty-five, we wanted to share with you the graduation rates. We continue to monitor this and look at it over the last three years. We did want to make note that the graduation rates for the state information that's been shared for us for twenty twenty-four has not been calculated. Information that's been shared for us for twenty twenty-four has not been calculated. There was some. Errors in the calculation formula, so they are still working on the twenty twenty-four data for us. Overall, we continue to outpace state and national averages with graduation rates. I was at eighty-seven and in two thousand and twenty-three, we were still at ninety-one point seven. We also are continuing to look at um the rates of graduation for our Compass program. And the number of students that graduate there, um that's our alternative um path to graduation. They have graduations happening on a regular basis throughout the school year when students achieve. That number of graduation credits and acknowledge those students at those times. Those students do also have the opportunity, um they are invited to attend their. Class or the next graduating classes graduation ceremony if they choose to attend. So if they graduated in February um with their Linmar diploma, they are invited to attend in May to be part of that ceremony. I know that was a question that came up previously, um so I just wanted to clarify that for you as well.
Terms of the overall graduation rate, Compass is a program within the high school and not actually a separate. Those numbers all filter into the overall graduation rate, correct?
Regarding the graduation rate and thinking about. Any sort of issues with like absences or the greater increase. I am asking myself like, oh, are these correlated? I would assume yes, but I am not here to make assumptions, especially when there's data in front, and I don't know if that's been looked at. Or it's kind of, one goes with the other naturally, but if you had any additional context or have looked at that.
It's not readily available, but that is something that we could look and dig further into, Laura. Um it's just generally not a instant. You get these combination. Um I just want to say also, when we look at, this is the overall graduation rate. Within my department with Student Services, we also take a step back and break down and look at our graduation rates. For students who have been identified to receive special education services, we're looking at them for ELL populations. Just to measure what our programs are doing and how long maybe they've been in those services and what their rates are. And then for students who have been found eligible for special education, we look at a four-year rate and we also look at a five-year window. Um the state kind of changes that every couple of years on us, how we look at that to see if they completed in the amount of time. We do have some students that continue on for those four plus services, um but when they're done with those, that counts back towards our graduation.
Thank you. I have a question regarding students that are on an IEP. So um if they, can you help me to understand? So for those that do not graduate but are on an IEP. What are the primary barriers for a student to not be able to graduate if they have an IEP? Is it typically um just not attending? Is it typically an academic barrier? Is it, um what do you see as the main reasons why students are not able to get to that graduation?
Can I pick E, all of the above, plus one, Melissa? Um I think we have some attendance, we have, um there are some academic challenges that come for some students we try to work with. Through accommodations and then we do do some modifications as well. We look at what their schedules are and where they fall in our continuum of services. And then we do have a subset of students that have their IEP individuals. Teams have determined that they haven't met their transition needs in the areas of living, learning and working. And if that's the case for a student that's eligible for special education services, the team can look at how do we meet those needs? And where does that happen? What are the services they need? And then we address those there. It could be a variety of programming, it could be working in the community, it could be getting assistance at Kirkwood through the vital program. There's a variety of things, the team determines what the needs are, and then we kind of look at where we can provide those services.
So if they're continued on in one of those programs, are they considered not graduated at that time in order to continue on?
In order for us to continue to receive funding for them, um they are still considered a high school student. Um and then when they do complete it, then they become a graduate of our district. They go into that five-year data and sometimes. Six for some of our students. So yeah, as soon as they graduate, um then they become part of our graduation data.
And then from the academic standpoint, are there any hard and fast, like these? Things absolutely have to, like you have to take this class or you have to be able to do X, Y and Z in order to graduate? Or is that all flexible based on what's in the IEP?
We do look at students need to have that four triple three in Iowa, um credits. Language arts or the literacy, the math, the science of social studies. We are, each IEP team, um depending on what a student's unique needs are, will look at how do they achieve that four triple three? To meet the graduation requirements from Linmar, and then we also look at those transition needs to make those decisions. It's very individualized. Um I think the high school team needs to be um complimented on some of the. Intense work they've done with some of their courses to modify it, to make it accessible to a variety of learners. Um looking at adapting those standards and doing different things to meet kids' needs. We're not hundred percent perfect yet, but we are um doing a lot of great things to ensure that kids are getting a diploma.
I have two things. One, we we kind of brush over a lot of times attendance. And that is also though the importance of being in class to receive instruction, so therefore when I receive instruction, I can. Complete tasks, complete tasks eventually get me through repassing this class. And I think sometimes we just, um in today's world right now with the truancy and getting in trouble for all, that's not what this means. We're saying that because you were not able to learn, actively learn, you were not able to process through and therefore. Get the credits needed and things like that, so we're, that's, that is that attendance issue again, right? Just reinforcing that. And two, did it, is, am I reading that correctly? The national graduation rate was two thousand and two? Was eighty-seven percent? So you're wanting to, we're looking at a twenty. The reason I ask that is because that would have been a really profound thing in that what does a twenty-year? Are we asking something more of ourselves than we have asked in decades?
That's a typo, it should be twenty twenty-two, because the most recent data from the federal government is always a couple of years behind.
But not that far behind? Okay, just thought I'd ask.
Just two years, not twenty-two years, so. Yeah, there you go. I do think just the la- the last thing on graduation rates, and then we can move on, is that. You know, you you can't, because of all the factors that Melissa was describing, we can't assume that this is, you know. Whatever that would be, almost eight percent of kids being dropouts. That's not always what that translates to. I mean, you would think, well, ninety-one point seven of your kids graduated, so the others dropped out. No, there are certain kids that, like Melissa was describing, for whatever post-second or post-high school. Support they still need to have could go into then that five-year graduation. There are, and you can find that on the Department of Web, it just gets, or the Department of Ed website, it gets really confusing when we start talking four and five years. So these are the four-year rates. We will see our five-year rates are increased. Partly because some of our students with special services do come back and meet the graduation requirements based on their IEP, so. All right, um is this the last one? Yes, and it's a lot of pages. Okay, so our our last section is around college and career readiness, and this is a report that you probably haven't seen. So for those of you that have been on the board for some time, this is, this is a little bit newer, but. There's, there's two of the same reports in here, so roughly halfway through that, actually on page. One thirty-two is where that starts, and then one seventy-nine is the same information, it's just broken down differently. So one gives an overview, the other then continues to give subgroup or demographic population for that. And and really, we're not going to go through all of this, but I would encourage you to look at that. This really gets to. The National Student Clearinghouse, which is um a tracking system that we utilize. Through the colleges and universities to help track the number of kids that um enroll, stay enrolled, complete a. Two, four vocational degree, five-year, six-year, really gives us a good snapshot of kind of how our kids are doing post-secondary. So there's a lot of different graphs that you can see, and a lot of those. Compare like all versus in-state and out-of-state, so again, I'm not going to go through each one of those, but some of the bullet points that we. We have on there is that um our most recent, you know, our, we are having fewer enrollees in post-secondary institutions. So down from almost seventy-five percent in twenty sixteen to just over sixty percent in twenty twenty-three. And I think that's kind of where we're at, that gets to Britt's point about, you know, not every kid is choosing a post-secondary route. A lot of them are going into the workforce or the vocational programs, that type of thing. Which is fine, we all know the cost of colleges is really tough for a lot of families, so. So then one of the things we do look at in some of the data that we use in school is that second bullet point about persistence. So we want to see, you know, even though we only have sixty, roughly sixty percent of our kids going to post-secondary. What's that persistence rate, meaning how many stayed for a second year past their first year in post-secondary? And that number was at ninety-one percent recently. So that's good, that at least tells us kids that are going to go um have the skills to be able to persist through that that college experience. And then for our most recent cohort, which would have been in twenty eighteen, we had fifty-five percent of our students. Completed a college degree within six years of enrollment. Now you can break that down a hundred different ways, that could be six years at one school, that can be six years at six different schools or ten different schools, who knows? But at least they completed at some point within six years of enrolling for college.
Can you define, I know what it says in here, but our numbers. What are you defining as college?
Yes, thank you. Let me look at that. I think they are saying. Students that enroll in college would be public, private, two, four, any in-state or out-of-state.
So for two-year, are we looking at just associate degrees? Are we also looking at kids that enroll in a community college program that is a nine-month or a one-year certificate diploma? And are we looking at apprenticeship programs which are not technically college but are a training program that ends up with a credential?
Uh good question. I don't know if it's looking at apprenticeship programs, but I do think. Because I was on the committee at the state that looked at this like ten or twelve years ago, and so that's stretching my memory. But I do think it's anybody that's receives a certificate through college or post-secondary institution. So it could be both, yeah. If it's non-certificated like through the, you know, IBW, local union. And they're just getting stuff and they get certified through that through an apprenticeship program that may not be included in here, but if it's. An accelerated one-year, two-year, whatever program, as long as they receive a certificate from the institution, they should be captured in this.
And does that, I don't, I don't think it does, but I'm going to ask the question, does it count? Non-credit credentials, like if I want to go and be a phlebotomist, which is the person that draws the blood and does all that stuff. That's a continuing education program now, they removed it from the credit-bearing program, and now it's a non-credit-bearing health credential. Even if the National Clearinghouse doesn't track that stuff, are we, so that we would have again a more whole picture of where our kids are going? Because like fifty percent of the workforce doesn't need this. Skilled trades, apprenticeships, advanced manufacturing, healthcare, those are all fifty percent of the workforce in Iowa right now. And you can do that without going to a formalized credit-bearing credential. So, you know, we might see a decline sixty-three percent, but I don't believe that that means that. You know, thirty-seven percent of our kids just are taking their high school diploma and going into the workforce. So I I would just love to know if if we can do a job, like if we can track that, if we can like ask those questions.
And I know based on what your job is when you're not a school board member, Britt, I think if there's any tools or resources. Suggestions, arrows that you can point us to to look at some of that, because I I do think that that becomes maybe a bit of. A barrier is how do you track those kids and get them to report back two to five years out? But it is something that we need to, it would be beneficial to.
I can tell you like the whole numbers of where I know groups are going. We'd have to brainstorm on how to track our kids, um because, again, that's why I'm asking, is because it's not easily. I don't think anyone has it figured out. I think different people are trying different things, so that's why I was curious what we were trying.
No, and I I think right now this is probably the best information to track. And this is just pulled together for like groups. I don't even know that we can drill down into this data to know like, well, what kids were they? The state ten or twelve years ago when they were doing that was trying to track, you know, we don't keep social security numbers, and I'm sure Jerry. Appreciates that from a tech angle that we're not keeping. We, it it's really hard, as you know, and your job to track kids. Once they leave our doors, other than self-reported survey stuff that they'll give us, we don't have a mechanism. So the state at one point was working Iowa workforce with the Department of Ed to see if they could do some type of. Like backend thing to get to what you're talking about, like hey, if you're in a in a job, how do we track you? I don't know where they're at with that, and this may be some of the best information that we can get right now.
What about our exit interviews? Like when our seniors are graduating and we do an exit interview with the counselors? Can we use that as just baseline data, this is where we think this class?
And they they collect that, I don't know how much they've like done a crosswalk with this data then, the hard part is. That's great data then, but we don't get to five, ten-year out, eh, the farther you get out from high school, the less and less. Response we ever get back from kids about.
The state used to require us to track every student that had left, every student had left with an, with IEP services. We were responsible for tracking them every two and four years post-school experience. And we don't even do that anymore, they, it's very challenging, we're very transient.
I don't want us to track. Digital students five or six years, but it would be really interesting to look at our, as they're graduating. And they're doing those exit interviews when we still have them in the building, at least looking at our graduation rate. And our college-going rate per this data is X for the class of twenty twenty-four. Um and our exit survey said that this percentage, while they weren't going to college, was going here. It would just give us an idea. We could, I mean, we're never going to align all of this data, but it would give us an idea of where that other set of students might intend to go.
I think one thing to talk about too is culture changed in all of this time. Um I'm the mom of six children. We fed the first one straight through college by the last ones, they're taking gap years, it's common to take a gap year. It is not, it is, try the school, it's not the school, when my kids are going, like, the school was the biggest question they ever had. Where am I going to go to college? And now it's like, oh, that wasn't a match, I'll move to this school. So we have a very fluid group, which may not be that they didn't graduate, but how did they get to that path? How you ask that question and how you find them, sorry, I have twenty and thirty-year-olds, they're not really the, going to respond. So unless there's a Starbucks gift card at the end of that, I'm not sure how you would do that, or it was gift card of your local coffee shop. So, but thank you for this data, because I think um one thing I keep reminding myself, you had another one that said, just because it says ninety-one percent. It doesn't mean that we have a uh eight percent dropout or a nine percent dropout, it means there's another plan. I just looked at that number and went back, it's now ninety-seven percent, it's a three percent that we look at. And how important it is to not stop at the number, but see the, see it through, so. I was all about asking questions today, so I thank you very much for um. Just helping me, because it tells a story, which gets me back to one of my things I said to Nathan, there are stories in here. And it'd be lovely if our press releases went out and said, by the way, did you know Linmar has graduated? Graduated its X amount of class that has just scored in the ninety percentile once again, or some, some lovely story. Because um I know for our household, our kids, their job was to get scholarships. And they did it academically, and we are still to this day proud of that level of excellence in in what they were received, so. Thank you.
Okay, well, oh, we got one more.
Takeaways, uh what, summaries?
You want this one? Well, just thank you for your time, and um you know, Melissa and I do or not, the intent was not to overwhelm with data, but to really. Just remind ourselves that our kids aren't just numbers on a page. But hopefully you hear from us and from the work all of us are doing in the district, you know, this. We really do try to align the data and the trends that we see with the decisions that we make. And our our principals and our school leadership teams and just everybody, you know, from Amy at the top all the way down, really try to. Respond to this as as best we can. We're going to look at this with the School Improvement Advisory Committee. The DEI Committee is going to have a chance to review some of this at their next meeting. But we just wanted you to have, you know, a a nice professional look at um the snapshot of our data. Plus, now that we've done it, it'll be easy to upload data for next year, so there you go.
Thank you, thank you very much, Nathan. You're the ones that did all the hard work, so we really, really appreciate it. And we've been, we've been waiting patiently, and uh so we appreciate it. Okay, so we're moving forward, six oh two board visit, September twenty-sixth, we went to Excelsior. I appreciate everybody that was able to attend. Any comments?
I just want to share the one comment that has stuck with me, it's been two weeks, and I still think about. I I actually made it to every table somehow, and whether it was kids talking about the sport that they're in. Or fine arts, you know, I talked to. Or fine arts, you know, I talked with theater and band and orchestra and choir and. Or it was robotics or D and D or, you know, the, the Linmar link, whatever it was. Um, first, the kids were so prepared that I only asked each table one question. I just stuck with the same question. I asked them, what's their favorite thing? About whatever they've chosen to get involved with, and all of them said the same thing. That, uh, they have found friendship and support and community. In whatever they have chosen, they all shared the same thing. That they have found something to get involved in, in school that makes them feel like themselves, that they have people. That they have found friends and a supportive environment for them to, to be themselves and to learn new things and to grow. And so I just keep coming back and reflecting on. All of them said that, and they were all in different, different things, and I just thought that that was a really great thing to hear. I don't think I could have asked for a better, a better answer from those kids. They did a wonderful job of presenting.
Um, I just wanted to say I loved this school visit. I loved it. It was student-led. And so it's like, it would, you know, it's not like these kids were, you know, under a. You know, a bunch of adults standing behind them while they talked about whatever they were involved in. This was just them. And there was so much just joy and comfort in that room. Um, and, and, you know, after they talked about their thing. I, I tried to just like chit-chat and just kind of be like, oh, so what class are you missing right now? You know, and, and, and it, it's just, I think what you said about community, um, really struck me as well. Um, and so just getting to hear from the kids that are there, that it was, it was fantastic. Thank you.
I also really had a lot of fun, um, getting to talk with the students and hearing their passions. Um, a couple of the clubs that I have not had a lot of interactions with before that were just really fun to hear about. Were the Dungeons and Dragons Club. I heard and learned so much about that game that I did not know about. So that was just, I, their excitement and enthusiasm for the game was, um, just palpable. And I was like, I'm gonna get into this game. This is really cool. Um, and the, um, LMTV group was, um, they're like, oh, we don't go on TV. We do the back scenes. And like, they were just so excited about their, being the producer and being the cameraman and. Like, all the work that they, that goes into that and how proud they are about, um, the work that goes into that. And then they get to bring the information to their peers, and there was just such a sense of pride in that, and I loved that. Um, and I just have to give kudos to the math counts group. They get up early as middle schoolers. To come and do math at like s- seven AM. It was.
I did ask them twice on that. I was like, so you, you voluntarily come in at seven AM to take extra math tests?
Yeah.
And it's fun, and I love it. They are so passionate about math, and they get so excited, but yeah, I verified that too, because I couldn't believe what I heard.
They even go to the library on Saturdays, they told me, and sometimes we'll get pizza.
To practice their math test, yeah. I, I was just blown away at how amazing these kids were and how enthusiastic they were about math. And I just love it, and they are gonna do amazing things someday. Um, and then the Lion Links group was another one that I had just never heard of, and I didn't even know that that was a thing. Um, but this is a, a group that supports, um, other kids with, um, different types of. Visible and invisible disabilities, and, um, they just radiated with joy. About the ways that they support each other and learn about each other and, um, how many great, meaningful friendships they have, um, developed through this group. So I just, um, wanted to highlight those four because they were ones I had never heard about and learned a lot about their groups and, um, really enjoyed learning.
So I'll just add, sorry.
Go for it.
Um, math counts has been around a while. I, I was in math counts, uh, when, when I was in middle school. I did not go in on Saturdays. But I probably would have if I could have, um, and, and I actually still have my trophy from my math counts competition. It's a right triangle. So, um, I, I love math counts, so, anyhow.
Lot of things coming out about you, first. Explains a lot in.
The more you know, Barry.
Justin. For, for those who are listening, uh, online later, so. We, we were talking about the, the, the tour that we got of Excelsior. And normally we go and we see a couple of classrooms, and we see some teachers and some, some students and some staff and whatnot. And this time it was, was a different take on it, so we went into the building and, um, immediately went to. Uh, was it the cafeteria? No, it was the gym? The library, the library. And, uh, kids representing all the different groups, or at least most of the different groups at the school, had their own table. And it was between two and three or four kids at each table, and they had a little presentation to give about their group. And, uh, the takeaways that I heard from, from this was first is that if you have a student in the district and they're not involved in something. Get them involved in something. Help them find, encourage them to get involved in something. We heard from the students is that the more that they're involved, the more that they feel home, the more that they feel community, the better experience that they have. The second piece is that all the groups, um, were formed by kids because the kids have the interest in them. Uh, you know, we heard about, uh, there's a Dungeon and Dragons group for existence, or for instance, because the kids are interested in it. A- and we hear that about different groups at, at the different schools all the time. Why is there this group? Why is there this group? Because that's where the kids have got belonging, and these are groups that the kids have created. Uh, and so we've got a, a strong position here to allow the kids to create those groups, to form that belonging, and we see that across the schools, so it was great.
I think that what was really cool is not only, so we walk in the room and there's all these tables, and there's kids at each one, and there's tons of laptops. And if you wanna see how we have prepared students for presentations, they had PowerPoints, they had their slideshows ready. They could articulate everything they were talking about. There, the adults in the room were a couple of principals, and other than that, they were on. There was, just like you were saying before, nobody was propping them up and then feeding them questions. And it took us a while to stop asking questions and listen to the presentations that they had prepared. They were ready for us. They had practiced, and again, to see a building present, um, allow us to hear the stories. Uh, we say this all the time, what's their story? What's their narrative that they would like us to know? Cause we do a lot of they, they want this, or we tell them what their story is, and this was their story. And if I took my takeaway, I went back to the media kids and I said, go get your camera, go get your whatever. And go start filming everybody that just was in this room, because they have something to share. And people will come when they do the invitations versus some booklet that we get at, um, Welcome Day. But when they tell their story, it becomes community reaching out to community, and I was just really proud of them, and they just looked at me and went. Well, we're the producers, and they go, go produce the story of Excelsior then. So, well done to that school. At the rest of the presentations we go, they're usually a little more, um, you know, test-heavy and, or, um, presentation-heavy by the administration. This was just lovely.
Great comments. As you can tell, we enjoyed it. Appreciate it. We're going to six oh-three Finance and Audit Director Sloss and Maury and myself attended with Amy and John. Um, comments that either of you have?
I want Justin to go first.
Really, it was just a couple of facilities updates. Um, you know, as you're driving past, uh, on, on Tenth, you see the walls coming up. Um, and it's, it's, the, the excitement is filling the air. My daughter was just talking about how excited she is for the, the building to come together and. Yeah, the, the performance building, so, uh, that's, it's coming along well, and it's, it's a visual aid that. You know, when you see progress, you, you're, it's really good to hear about. Um, another piece is, is just that, um, you know, we have the, the, the LRC, right? We're just kind of continuing to work through that, um, as our contractors continue to figure out exactly what. What needs to get finished and make sure they've got the supplies to do that, so that'll help us understand when we're gonna move into that. And, and Amy, I'm sure she'll provide a little update on that later. It, it, I'm looking forward to that, you know, back to that performance venue though, uh, show choir, uh, not this year, next year.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna emphasize, is that people keep asking when, 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 and now that the walls are going up, I think that when is gonna get more persistent. And the goal is Supernova twenty-twenty-six, so, and that generally happens in January, so that's the goal. If it's earlier than that, it would be great, but the goal is Supernova twenty-twenty-six, so, um. I don't have anything else to add. You, you covered it.
Maybe I'd share real quick just about the Activity Center. That's, you know, we've been talking about it quite a bit. Uh, one of the next new additions that we need to make, so, um. There's a, a, a small group that has been working on that very diligently, coming back with some plans. I'm really excited to kind of see what the, what the realm of possibilities come back with, and, and I'm hoping that we're gonna hear some more of that this fall and end of the winter. Um, but what we've heard from students and from parents is that we need more space for our athletic facilities. And that's not just for teams that are competing, that is for, uh, co-ed team, or not co-ed team, um, direct teams. Just, you know, kids for in, in their class, in the PE classes. And, and every other time that a kid is just being involved in the school, oftentimes they need those facilities, and so. Uh, you know, teams are IDating on that and coming back, so more to come.
Okay, and then I'd also like to share out, I appreciate the comments, share out that we are in the process of looking into a new scoreboard as well. And that's out for bids at this time. If you've attended any events at the football stadium, or at the athletic stadium, sorry. The, uh, it's just, it's just old, it's just outdated, so we'll, there's more to come on that as well, as soon as we get. A bid then, etc., so appreciate your comments. Thank you. Um, Marion City Council, I have two reports. First of all, City Council and then something else, but the City Council meeting, uh, was pretty basic. There really wasn't anything that affected Linmar at all. Uh, the Mara, the mayor group gave a, a nice talk at that as well, just to report on that. But a more important little report I wanna give, I attended an event that Dr. Paget Scogman put on about cell phones. And cell phones are kind of a buzzword out on the street today, so I attended that, uh, an hour-long session along with. A number of people from the Cedar Rapids School System and a number of people down at the, uh, Cedar Rapids Library. So there'll be more and more to come on that. Uh, Dr. Scogman is pretty vocal, pretty, you know, the, as we discuss this moving forward. Some of the things that come up is, is how are cell phones affecting mental illness? How are affecting social, uh, well-being, et cetera, like that? So she's done a lot of work on that, and there's, there will be more to come because we're going to watch more. That was strictly an hour session. And I was glad I went, but it's, we have a long ways to go on that, so we'll report back.
You say more to come.
Well.
From her, from?
From her.
Is she making recommendations to school districts? Like, what, what is, how is this facilitating? How is the more to come?
No, no, she's, she, um, the Cedar Rapids School District folks asked a number of questions. And they had asked if this was something that we should be talking to the legislators about. They were asking if there was things, so she's actually, uh, they were actually hoping that they could put it, pull it forward. To the State School Board Convention possibly, or to, uh, the going to, uh. As we meet with our legislators moving forward, because I think there's going to be a number of things coming out of that.
What would the ask be?
Uh, she didn't get that far.
So she's, she reported on research that she has found. She is not ready at this time to make any recommendations, whether someone listened to her information. And they choose to want to move that information forward, I think is where it was left. I don't believe that she herself was saying, this is what you need to do, and this will be the outcome. Uh, I just went back and forth with her a little bit on some emails. I feel that we addressed this very boldly, um, as a, as a board and have felt very, um, confident. That our administrators are dealing with this at each building level, so, um. I think that it was informative. I did not attend, but I went back and forth with their information, and I just wanna, I wanna just reen, reen, reinforce. That we have, we are dealing with this. We took, um, a very, uh, I think, um, policy by, we say, we trust. Uh, the, the administrators within each building to make sure that the policies that exist are being complied with to the best of their abilities. So I, I think we kind of had that conversation.
Well, that's kind of where I was going, is I thought we had decided to continue letting the buildings do it, so I didn't know where this.
Yeah, and the only reason.
Fit into.
Yeah, and the only reason I attended was because, uh, Dr. Scogman is a, uh, well-known pediatrician in the community. I know the Scogman family very well personally, and I just really kind of wanted to hear what she said. So basically, she works at Mercy, and they taped her whole presentation, and so I believe they're using it for future goings, et cetera. But it was, uh, just a very well, I mean, she had facts, and she had good facts. But we, as a board, like you said, have already made our decisions. I just wanted to gather more information. Because I know it's going to be a topic moving forward, whether it's in the legislature or whatever it is, so thanks for asking questions. So, okay. Superintendent Kortmeyer is going to share updates as well.
Thank you, yes. Uh, I think a few of these were mentioned earlier, but Athletic Honor, congratulations to Christian Cloyde. Linmar High School Junior for being named KCRG Athlete of the Week. Um, also, at the last board meeting, we recognized, uh, Christine Steiman, but I don't wanna do that again. At Wilkins Elementary Kindergarten Teacher for being the recipient of KCRG's A-plus for Education Award. Also, congratulations to the students and staff at Novak Elementary for participating in their stride for Pride Walk to raise funds for their specials classes. Um, I think also mentioned earlier today or tonight was the Restoration Project Highlight. Um, a huge, huge thanks goes out to the Linmar Class of nineteen seventy-three, the foundation. Our current Linmar High School students that were involved in the project. And Linmar High School Metals Teacher Jeremy Brown, who insisted in restoring the Armstrong, Armstrong Victory Bell. So it was shining, ready for the parade, as well as, um, the acknowledgement on, on the field, uh, last Friday night. So it's super exciting, and it just brought together so many generations on a project. I think that was so cool to see. Um, President Buckholz honored our principals during National Principals Month earlier today as well. Um, last Thursday, pivoting a little bit now, we provided an update to both, uh, staff and parents related to the new attendance laws. And our approach with how we're coding student illness, and that included a shift to allow four days per semester for illness. That would be considered exempt, um, from, um, the truancy law with, without a doctor's note. So pivot that we've made since the beginning of the school year. Um, lots of different, uh, meetings and participation with homecoming events over the last couple of weeks. Um, and some, uh, building visits to Westfield, Novak, Excelsior, and Lynn Grove. Um, those were some of the highlights of my meetings. And then as far as facilities updates, I'll expand just a little bit with, um, what Britt and Justin shared earlier. That we do have, um, schematic design over to a cost estimator, OPN does, around the new Activity Center. So we're eagerly awaiting that. Um, that'll come back to the small group, and then from there, we will pivot to that larger group. Um, who initially was in that conversation back in February and March, so we're excited for that, um, progress that's happening there. The Performance Venue, yes, if you have not been along Tenth Street, the pre-cast installation, uh, just looks amazing. Uh, the walls are. Uh, very high, and it's just look, looking like a, a massive, um, opportunity for our kids. It's gonna be wonderful. And new administration building, we're getting closer and closer to, um, having the ability to move in there substantial. Um, we're hoping that, um, Peak will, um, be kind of finished up with what they need to do in there this coming Friday. And John and Andy are working closely with them, and they're continuing to, uh, work on their punch list. And, uh, make sure that things are in order. Jerry and our tech team are, um, getting in there regularly, and, uh, we will stage then. Um, having our administrative staff get into that building, um, possibly as early as, um. Beginning with next week, but a lot of things have to come into play. Um, that staging may take place over about a two, two-week period of time. Um, upcoming events for administrator staff and students then, um, we've got America Reads Day coming up on October eighteenth. Um, last month, if you remember, we held, uh, high school conferences, and this month we'll be holding elementary, intermediate, and middle school conferences. On the twenty-second and twenty-four, which then brings us to the end of the first quarter already, same day. And then we'll have professional development and a workday on October twenty-fifth.
Amy just, uh, attendance law, you, you, this is the end of the quarter, but the attendance law is by semester, so.
Well, it depends on the grading period, so for those students that are involved in quarter classes, um, at the high school. That is considered a grading period as well as the semester, so for most of our students, the semester is the impact. For some students involved in our quarter classes, we're also tracking that, so policy states by, um, grading period. You're welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Kortmeyer. We're moving on now. We don't have any unfinished business. We're moving on to new business. And at this point, we're gonna talk about pointing a new board. And at this point, we're going to talk about appointing a new board member for the board. First of all, Rachel Wall resigned, uh, a long time board member. So publicly I want to thank her once again for her service. Thank her for everything she's done for us. As we move forward, as we talk through this, we were very, very, very fortunate, in my opinion. We had eight people apply for this position and we feel very qualified candidates. This is just really exciting for me moving forward because a year from now we'll be having another election. So at this point, the person that we appoint will be appointed for one year. Next year in November, in twenty twenty-five will be an election at that point. We will be filling three positions or there'll be three positions up for election at that point. So it'll be, it'll be a sh- a short term move. So as we move forward now, I'd just like to have some discussion around the table on anybody's thoughts or comments.
Um, I can start out. I, I think that first of all, I want to say that we had, I was really impressed with the number of quality applicants. Um, I think that we, it shows that we have some really, um, invested people in our community that are interested in serving. And I think this was the first time in quite a while that we saw, well, at least ever in my, um, tenure on the board, that we saw this magnitude of interest in the school board. And so I think first of all, that, that in and of itself is amazing and a really positive, um, step. Um, one thing that, that I think about when I was reviewing the applicants was that, um, some of the names rose to the top for me because we have heard from them at the board, um, at board meetings, we've seen them at board meetings. We've, um, heard enough from them speaking to kind of get a feel for who they are and how they, um, how they interact with the public, how they interact with us as board members. And that gives me some peace of mind as to how they might interact at the board table. Um, and I think an important part of being a board member is being able to interact respectfully and those kinds of things. And so, um, that's one of the things that I was looking for was somebody that had, um, been actively engaged with the board, um, whether it be through emails or, um, board meeting participation. Um, so that's one thing.
Yeah. Uh, just before we move on, I want to add one thing to that too, just so the public, whoever's watching online understands. This is a very tight by law, tight window. So we really only have thirty days to make a decision. So, you know, to get the, get the, the resumes in, to get through it all and to vet it all is kind of a tight window. So, so we have to, like Melissa said, we have to vet it by who we know, kind of vet it by people that we know in the community, et cetera. So just keep moving around.
Um, echo, echo that, a lot of echoing. Sorry, my brain is, um, but yeah, I, I also, um, not, not just names we might recognize, um, from both in the board setting and out, but, um, the fact that there, the, the applicants, um, the applicants who have been present and, um, had that familiarity with the last year or two of board conversations, um, of, um, issues and challenges and successes in the Lindmar community. Um, we, we will think the timing is nice that we'll have the, um, the school board convention in Des Moines. And whatever candidate, you know, we point tonight, um, I think is going to be very lucky to go to, you know, new board member orientation, school finance one oh one. Um, I, as, I mean, elf, my personal elephant in the room is I was appointed in February. Um, and I, I kind of learned through my colleagues on the board and extensive reading and the school board association website. And I'm just, um, relieved, I guess, and happy that, um, you know, whoever we appoint can have that opportunity to get that onboarding in like a, in a classroom setting and take that all in. But, um, while they can learn the school board information, um, at the convention and whatnot, having that contextual information is, is not easy, as quickly learned. And, um, and so to me, especially with, you know, the one year left, uh, there was a, a big value in involvement and engagement with Lindmar.
We, we had eight people apply for the position. I'm floored and proud of the community that we've got here. Um, we've got some, a lot of folk who, uh, really want to do right for the kids. Um, I, it, I'm humbled and excited to see the future of the district. So, uh, again, we had eight, uh, really good people, uh, to, to come forward. So, thanks.
Um, I just want to thank, it's not easy again to put yourself out there, especially in this capacity. Um, and I guess I would just say, you know, there's a question on there about if you're going to run or not. And most of them said they were. So for those that don't get picked, because we can only pick one, um, when the time comes, reach out to us and talk to us about what it's like to be on the board and what it's like to run for the board. Um, because we all want success, uh, for candidates who are, you know, willing to put themselves out there and work for the betterment of our kids. So, um, we can only pick one of the eight people, but, uh, that doesn't mean that we're not in your corner because there'll be three seats open. So that's, I guess that's what I would say. And I have a nomination if.
I have one more thing. I, I, I want to thank you because, um, this actually reminds me of our, one of our debates. You get down to here and what can you say that's new? And I don't think that's what's important. I think what's important is yes, 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 and yes. Because one thing that happens is, um, it's not, um, popularity because you, we've seen your face. It's have you been engaged? Do you know what's going on? Can you jump in boots, I mean, on the ground, boots on kind of thing, running at full pace? Because you have one year and we are obviously in that one year's time have, keep saying, oh, but it's never been like this. Oh, it's, it's not, but this year has been a big year and it continues to be big. And it's with a great excitement, the quality and the caliber and the diversity and the backgrounds of the candidates, um, that, uh, put their paperwork in, in articulated, beautiful, um, heartwarming, um, ways that they wanted to be engaged in, uh, the leadership and the decision-making. Um, not everybody is designed to, um, be the, the person who brings in snacks for the kindergarten class. Uh, there are people who are designed to be leaders and have a voice piece for this. And there was great revealing of that, uh, people who have a track record of great, um, leadership in other areas. Um, for me, it was, it, 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 are you aware of what, what's going on now? Do you know the culture of what you're getting into and, um, uh, what is our, what is the standout for me? Uh, may not be, um, maybe something different for you guys, but as you spoke, yes, 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 and yes. So with that, I'm going to just leave it back to you. Oh, I'm sorry, chair.
I appreciate all your comments. We, we have a motion to appoint.
Um, I make a motion to appoint Mid Hat Mansour to fill the vacant board seat.
A second.
Completion of the term in November twenty twenty-five.
I saw you going to your mic.
Sorry, it's not funny. Motion by Britt, second by Katie. Questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard Mid Hat. You need to come forward? John, are you going to do this or?
Okay, this time let's take a photo. We have to pause long enough to take a photo. Oh, 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 even we have communications with a camera.
We're good. We're good.
This work? Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully, faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of your elected office in the Lindmar Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Mid Hat, you're going to get your stuff and come up and sit by John? You're now on the board. So now you have to, you get to vote. Once again, I, I, I congratulate Mid Hat, but I also want to thank everybody that put their name in the hat and we will be visiting with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Welcome to the board.
Now we have a full board again, except Laura left. Okay. Eight oh two, approval of open enrollment requests.
Make a motion to approve the open enrollment request as presented.
Second.
Motion by Britt, second by Melissa. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Um, question real quick on the certified, uh, classified staff resignation. One of the dates is December thirteenth.
Can, excuse me.
You need a second?
Can we get a second first?
Sorry.
How about a discussion?
Okay. Now we can have a discussion. Thank.
Thank you for the parliament, parliamentary. Uh, on the classified staff resignation, one of them is dated December. Is that, just checking if that's a type area, that's accurate?
They're, they're not rededicating children.
I assumed as much, but I know what assuming means.
Right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to just make one comment. We do have a retiree, Stephanie Rosendale, Indian Creek Health Assistant. Congratu- thank her for her service.
Are we on the consent agenda?
Yes. Yeah. Question?
Apologies, I had to step out to use the bathroom. Um, I just wanted to highlight, um, so in the consent agenda, we don't always highlight all the fine print on each of these things. Um, but one thing I've been noticing is the fundraising requests that come in. And we don't normally bring these up and we just rubber, like, approve them and move on. Um, but I just, I just want to read, so it's very visible that two of the fundraising requests, um, are raising funds for classroom supplies. So in this case, it's Bowman Woods Art Sonia Sales to raise funds for art supplies. And it's also the Oak Ridge T-shirt sales to raise funds for classroom instructional supplies and professional development materials. We have a lot of conversations about funding, but I think some of these day-to-day things, like, I don't want to glaze over them because, you know, we have staff going above and beyond to get money so that they can pay for just their classroom supplies. I, just awareness. That's all. Thank you.
Good comments. We have a motion.
I would be remiss, sorry, if I didn't just put in a note for the foundation that they do a lot of funding. And I know, I remember hearing it at, uh, the first year, but the, the note was, we hear a lot from our elementary student, uh, teachers, but not as much from, uh, intermediate and middle. So, uh, but I'm, that's just a note that the foundation does great things. I'm sure that these teachers have, have reached out.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for.
Thanks for your comments. We have a motion by Katie, second by Melissa. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to board calendar and communication. Uh, just a couple of things. Laura's got the next board meeting covered.
You mean city council meeting?
I'm sorry. City council meeting. Thank you. America Reads, I'm sure everybody's getting signed up. That's always an exciting day, fun day on the eighteenth. We have committee meetings. We have our Marion Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting coming up. I think we need to respond to that. Um, November seventh, Marion City Council. We have a volunteer. November seventh. If I said October, I apologize.
I'll take it.
I was, oh, no, go.
You want two in a row? You can have two in a row, but I'll do it if you want to. You like it. I do like it.
We have another one on the twenty-first. Sorry about that. We're going to be at the convention.
I'll, I'll look at the notes. Twenty-first.
Just so Mid Hat knows, the state school board convention, we'll, we'll be getting that stuff to you twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second roughly. So. You'll get bombarded. Just hang on to your hat. Sorry. Anything else for the good of the board?
Just note how fast this fall is going, that Thanksgiving is currently sitting on our calendar already. That's crazy.
Ready for adjournment?
All right. I will make a motion to adjourn at six forty. Second.
Motion by Britt, second by Katie. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Good meeting. Thank you, everybody. Nathan, Melissa, thanks for everything.